Welcome to the January 12th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We do have Oceanside Warriors in the House. And we've got Tri-City Medical Center. I'd like to start by calling roll. Roll call, please, Mr. Navarro.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss. And Councilmember Jensen is absent tonight.
Thank you. We're going to begin with our invocation. We do have Father Ray Evangelista from St. Mary's, Star of the Sea, here for that. So please all rise for the invocation.
Good evening, everybody. Blessings to you and the city of Oceanside this new year 2022. We will now put ourselves in the presence of our Lord in the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Almighty and ever-living God, we are here gathered together on our first council, city council, meeting this new year of 2022. We ask you to be with us. We ask you to send your Holy Spirit to be in our hearts and minds, to give us guidance, especially in these very challenging times due to COVID-19 pandemic. We ask you to give us the wisdom and the strength to continue and to guide us, especially our sitting council, for and in behalf of our people. May your goodness, the blessings, to make our city prosper and be more blessedful. We ask this to Christ our Lord.
Amen.
And Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. We're going to begin with proclamations and presentations. Going to start with Tri-City Medical Center, which is a business spotlight with the Chamber of Commerce. Come on down, please. Scott Ashton. This is something that we're really proud of. That is the partnership with the city of Oceanside and the Chamber of Commerce. And this, and the chamber, what the chamber does is puts a spotlight on some of the businesses that we have in town and to show that, you know, how important they are to our community. And Tri-City especially has been around for...
Sixty years.
Sixty years. I was going to say, I was born in Oceanside Community, so I missed it, being born at Tri-City, just up here on Horn Street. So yes, for sixty, sixty years, this great big birthday today. Isn't that great? So Scott, I'm going to hand this to you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to recognize Tri-City Medical Center. You know, as we said, they just celebrated their sixtieth anniversary of serving our community. So we're so excited. Many of you probably do not know that the Oceanside, Carlsbad, and Vista chambers back in the 1960s were instrumental in the formation of the Tri-City Hospital District. And we've enjoyed a great partnership for more than sixty years now. And Tri-City has been tremendously supportive of chamber events and initiatives. And one of them that I'd encourage you to check out, and Aaron might tell you a little bit about it, is our SoCal Workforce Initiative, which Tri-City took the lead on and brought in our other chambers for regional partnership and career awareness. So we're really pleased to be able to partner with Tri-City, and we're grateful for their support. And tonight we have with us Aaron Byzak, the Chief External Affairs Officer, and Dr. Jean Ma, the Chief Medical Officer. So I'm going to turn it over to Aaron to say a few words.
Well, thank you very much. Dr. Ma is our Chief Medical Officer. He's also a longtime ER physician. So if you've been to the ER, you might have actually seen Dr. Ma in there. So my name is Aaron Byzak. I'm the Chief External Affairs Officer for Tri-City Medical Center. As Scott, the mayor, indicated, we've been around for sixty years. And we've been serving this community and trying to do so with distinction. In addition to our really best-in-class heart and stroke care programs and orthopedic programs, we also do a tremendous amount in the community. And we are proud to partner with the city and with the Chamber of Commerce through our coastal commitment. That's our community outreach and support through active leadership initiatives. So we have over sixty partner organizations in the community, and we're supporting things that are going to move the needle on healthcare outcomes and also on the social issues that impact healthcare outcomes. One of those projects is SoCal, Soon Opportunities for Career Awareness and Learning, which is a partnership with all the three chambers locally, as well as with our school districts. And what that is, is a website where young people can go on and they can watch videos from a wide array of different careers, including 21 different careers at our hospital. We're going to continue to add to that. And they can see, they can click on links that will show them how they can receive education locally to pursue those careers, how much those careers make and things like that. And over the next few months, we're going to be adding a lot of additional services and capabilities to that website, partnering with, looks like probably the Oceanside Police Department, the Fire Department, and other city services to have some of their jobs listed on there as well. So we invite you socalworkforce.org to go to that, or you can check out tricitymed.org. We're just really proud to be here. A lot of amazing things going on in Tri-City right now. We're remodeling the emergency room. So that's coming up here pretty soon. We're working on a plan with the county for a new psychiatric health facility on the campus there and a number of other projects there. So we appreciate the opportunity to be here and thank you all for your support.
I do want to say, Dr. Ma, I didn't recognize you with the mask, okay? I do want to say that during this really horrific time with the pandemic, with COVID, there were several people who really became leaders in the community to try to get us testing and vaccines. And let me tell you, Dr. Ma was one of those people. And I mean, he was just so humble about it, too. He never told me what his position was at Tri-City. He just went out there and did it. And I'm just so amazed. I want to thank you, Dr. Ma, for taking that leadership. You continue to do so, and I'm just so, so excited. You helped, I believe, set up the one over at Cal State San Marcos. Is that correct?
Yeah. You can just say a couple of things about that.
Oh, sure. It's been a privilege to be able to try to be able to interact with our communities and go out in our communities. We've run our vaccine center and done over 35,000 vaccines in addition to the daily work of our staff. But now we're also running a lot of, a lot, at this point, is our mobile homebound for homebound seniors or any that are disabled and unable to leave the home. So that team is quite busy. And at this point, right now, of course, we're dealing with quite a bit of a surge at our facility. But we're going to get through it. And we're, yeah, and it really does take a team and the efforts, Mayor and the entire city of Oceanside. It's been a phenomenal partnership, and I really thank you. I'm humbled by this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So this is a picture time.
So you can be in the middle there.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your service. Thank you so, so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's give them another big hand. These guys, this is the frontline workers during this really, really tough, it's almost like a war, right? Okay, now, in the House, Oceanside Warriors, ten, let's start with 10 U. Are you guys ready? Come on down.
Let's go!
These are the champions! Just fill it all in here, guys. I mean, don't they look like they're ready to take anybody on? 10 U, and we do have a coach, the guy that helped them get to the top here. And I'm going to hand the mic over to the coach. We're here to celebrate these champions, 10 U. What are the ages?
Ten and under.
Ten and under. Look at these guys. Aren't they tough-looking? There you go.
I just want to thank you, Mayor Sanchez, and the council member board, on behalf of the Oceanside Warriors. We want to thank you guys for inviting us here. It's a privilege to be here in the city hall, and it's a privilege and an honor to represent Oceanside out there, wherever we're playing, wherever we go, including out-of-state tournaments and festivities. Our team's been prepared throughout the whole year. We had a successful season. We were undefeated in our, in our season, and we topped it off by being the 2021 QBO Chicks.
Right next to me. Yeah, some of you, some of you stay there. Yeah, there you go. So more people continue.
Try to face you guys.
Facing that way, too. Your families have been here.
As you can see, this is the majority of our team here. A lot of these kids worked hourlessly from October of 2020 all the way till January, what is it, January 9th was our last game. And just to come here in the city of Oceanside, our home, to be recognized like this is an honor and privilege, and we're so grateful for that. Thank you, city of Oceanside.
So I do have, we do have two teams today, and this is the first team up. I do have a proclamation for each team, and the proclamation reads, "In honor of Oceanside Warriors, 10 U, that's 10 and under, Division One, American Youth Football Regional Champions, San Diego County 2021. Whereas the Oceanside Warriors football team, 10 U, American Youth Football, players, coaches, families, friends, and supporters, were recently triumphant at the San Diego County Regional Championship Games, Division One, and were regional, Western Regional runner-ups. And whereas, team players displayed leadership, dedication, perseverance, team spirit, and have been positive role models and ambassadors for our city of Oceanside. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim January 12th, 2022, as Oceanside Warriors 10 U Day in the city of Oceanside, and urge all Oceanside residents to support these phenomenal young people and their families as they continue to strive for excellence. Congratulations and best wishes. You guys rock." So we'd like to have a picture, wait, before we do the picture, I heard that you have a really unique chant.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, well, I want to hear it. Let's hear it.
Check it out.
And then we get two beats, two slaps, wow! And then we get two beats, two slaps, oh, side! And then we get two beats, two slaps, on the rear flip!
Warriors on three, Warriors on me. One, two, three! Before we take this picture, can I get all my coaches up here, please?
Yeah.
Coaches, please. This is your shine, too, fellas. Any of the coaches, any other parent that wants to be a coach. Inside joke, inside joke.
Just go take me.
Where are you going to stand? You got one front, right, Sanchez? Get right here, yeah, right there.
Stand it right next to you. Can you take them off? Oceanside Warriors, 10 U! Give it up! Thank you. Thank you, Coach. Not to be outdone by 10 U, we do also have Oceanside Warriors, 11 U. 11 U in the House, come on down! You know, this is really, really exciting and highly unusual during a really bad time in the history of our city, that these family, coaches, kids were able to find a way to make something happen for these kids, for the families. And that's saying a whole lot. So I'm just wanting to say, we're really proud of you, really proud of you guys. And I'm going to go ahead and hand this mic to the coach.
Thank you so much. So, Ms. Mayor, thank you for having us here. Council members, we really appreciate the honor of coming here and celebrating the boys' success at 10 U and 11 U. The one thing I want to say is I'm new to California as of like six, seven months ago, and I cannot say that Oceanside has been nothing but hospitable and a lovely place to live and grow up with my family. So thank you for that, obviously. This is a wonderful community. Outside of that, backstory on the boys here. 11 U, same label, Oceanside Warriors. We entered the season with honestly not a ton of expectations. Seventeen kids on the team. And for anybody who knows football, there's 11 on the field. So most of these boys, they're not all here today, were playing both sides of the football, offense and defense, special teams, and just killing out there, working their butts off at practice, during the games, wherever we traveled to. And they far exceeded expectations. Similar to 10 U, we ended up winning the Q Ball, right? So applause for that. We won the Q Ball. Super successful. We also made it all the way to the finals of the regionals. We were unsuccessful, but the boys worked their butts off. And honestly, we went up north, showed what Oceanside football's about, and every single one of these boys, you would be very proud to represent your city.
Wow, thank you.
So with that being said, thank you all. Thank you all for being here. And hopefully this coming season, we can even do that much better. So we do things a little differently. We're not as, maybe as vocal with 10 U, but 11 U, we always broke our practices or started our practice the same way, right? So what would we do? One, two, three? You guys remember what we all did? So who's going to take us out on that? One of you. Come on, Kate. Come on, let's get in the middle. Ready, boys?
Warriors on me, Warriors on... Warriors on three, family on six. One, two, three, Warriors! Four, five, six, family!
And I just want to say that you also have a proclamation. It's basically very similar. This is, of course, in honor of Oceanside Warriors, 11 U, Division Two, American Youth Football Regional Champions, San Diego County, 2021. Very similar, whereas's, except that, therefore be it resolved, you're actually sharing this honor for today. And that is, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, I do hereby proclaim January 12th, 2022, as Oceanside Warriors 11 U Day. You're sharing with 10 U this day in Oceanside, and urge all Oceanside residents to support these phenomenal young people and their families as they continue to strive for excellence. Congratulations and best wishes. You guys rock. So any other coaches want to come down here for the picture? There you go.
Thank you, ma'am.
And then thumbs up, nice, yeah? Did you get it?
Everybody clap, Warriors on three, Bucks on three!
Thank you, the Oceanside Warriors. And if you'd like to leave, you can, if you'd like to. Thank you so much.
On behalf of my mom, Mr. Um, Detective Tilly Sun.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Aw, thank you. I miss him so much. We're now on closed session report. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. The council did not meet in closed session today.
Thank you. Thanks for the break. Next are consent calendar items, items number three through 21. Are there any requests to speak?
There are currently no requests to speak on any of the consent calendar items.
Then is there a motion to adopt?
Move approval.
There is a motion to adopt?
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. We're now on general items, starting with item number 22, and this is Direction to Staff to Incorporate Policies from the Draft Subarea Habitat Conservation Plan into the General Plan Update and Cease Further Efforts Towards Adoption of a New Subarea Plan. This is a report by staff, Stephanie Cervantes, planner.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Stephanie Cervantes with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting item 22 for you tonight. Staff recommends that the city council direct staff to incorporate policies from the Draft Subarea Habitat Conservation Plan into the General Plan Update and cease further efforts towards adoption of the Draft Subarea, Draft Subarea Plan, also known as the SAP. The state requires that the city address conservation and open space topics in the general plan. The city is currently working on a comprehensive general plan update and has a contract with DMB, which includes incorporation of subarea goals and policies into new, into the new general plan element. Staff anticipates that document will be brought in front of city council in spring of 2023. The purpose of the subarea plan is to conserve natural biotic communities and sensitive wildlife species. The city started work on the subarea plan in 1996 under the subregional umbrella of the Multiple Habitat Conservation Plan through SADAG. The city's staff currently uses the 2010 version of this draft subarea plan, and it is posted on our website. That version was never fully vetted publicly. In 2012, the city manager directed staff to finalize the subarea plan for adoption in order to address the awkward situation of administering a draft plan. From 2016 to 2018, staff worked with a consultant team to review the subarea plan and prepare it for adoption. However, the review concluded that there were several issues, including city financial obligation and inflexible development standards that would need to be addressed. During that time, staff also met with other North County cities, wildlife agencies, and local conservation organizations. On February 7, 2019, a memo which was included in our package for tonight was sent to the city council describing the financial obligations, outlined alternatives, and recommended that key goals and policies from the subarea plan be included in the general plan instead of subarea plan adoption. In February of 2020, the city council approved a professional service agreement with DMB to perform the second phase of the general plan update and included the recommendation of the February 2019 memo. As part of the general plan update effort, staff brought the draft community vision and guiding principles to this body in October of last year. At that time, city council directed staff to bring the issue of the subarea plan adoption back for formal direction to staff. Staff has analyzed the potential benefits and consequences of subarea plan adoption. If the subarea plan were adopted, both private and public projects would not be required individual habitat conservation plans, which could reduce review times. It may also be possible for the city to be awarded grant funding to implement the document. Another benefit may be the city's ability to issue take permits to projects that comply with the subarea plan and the implementation agreement established with the wildlife agencies. There are also several consequences if the subarea plan were adopted, including cost obligation on the city of $15.2 million for habitat restoration and initial startup costs, and $422,000 to $714,400 annually for monitoring and management. Staff recognizes that these amounts may be dated and could be reevaluated to ensure accuracy. There are also onerous development standards, including that within the wildlife corridor planning zone of max of 25% of the site may be developed, 100-foot buffers from habitat regardless of location or quality of the habitat, and no exemption for small projects such as single-family homes. As written, the document is difficult to understand and to administer. The proposed general plan policy approach includes taking the objectives and goals of the subarea plan to preserve plant and animal species, contribute to regional conservation efforts, and provide a clear process for private and public development into the new vital and sustainable resource element as part of the comprehensive general plan update. The policy approach would provide a reasonable balance between habitat conservation and a more efficient development review process while ensuring fiscal responsibility. Implementation of the general plan policies would occur via the Sonine Code. Staff has also done a considerable amount of outreach as part of the general plan update, and this approach allows for continued dialogue and collaboration with wildlife agencies and other stakeholders. This table shows the fiscal difference between the subarea plan and the policy approach for the city of Oceanside. While staff is still working on the general plan update and does not have exact policy language yet, the staff report included example minimum habitat conservation goals and policies that would be included in the vital and sustainable resource element, also seen on your screen here. They would include policy directions such as avoidance and reduced impacts, mitigation requirements, mitigation monitoring, and restoration as well. In 2018, the city's consultant at the town, AECOM, estimated that the city had spent almost $1 million on the subarea plan adoption. The policy approach would not require any additional funds, as there is already a professional service agreement with DMB in place for the work already. If the city were to pursue subarea plan adoption, staff estimates that an additional $350,000 in consulting costs would be needed, plus staff time. Staff recommends that the city council direct staff to incorporate policies from the Draft Subarea Habitat Conservation Plan into the general plan update and cease further efforts towards adoption of the subarea plan. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we currently have two requests to speak. Our first speaker is Lori Feiler, to be followed by John Bodorf.
Hello, Mayor and council. My name is Lori Feiler. I'm the CEO for the Building Industry Association. I'm glad to be here tonight. Actually, having worked on the MSCP in 19, in the late 90s, I can feel your pain. It's been a long, long struggle to get, to work on that. But truly, the goal is to protect our habitat conservation, to conserve our habitat, our endangered species, and our open space, and while incorporating the appropriate land for the people that are growing, growing up in our region and that may still come. Including the work that has been completed in the past into the vital and sustainable resource element makes a lot of sense. You keep the values of resource protection within the general plan where it can fit in with all of the other elements incorporated in a general plan, and this will provide for consistency and continuity. So I think that's a great idea. We always imagined that there would be a regional source of funds to support MHCP work, but that has not come to fruition. And rather than the city accept the risk of a huge financial burden, we support including the information and direction in the general plan, and this will provide clarity for conservation efforts as well as private and public development. Because at the end of the day, while we are doing a great job at protecting our open space and endangered species, we must also protect the opportunity to build the much-needed housing we need, specifically affordable and middle-income housing, because those are the families that work here and are, work hard in our communities but feel they are being pushed out of San Diego County. So I think this is a good balance and makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
John Bodorf?
Good evening, City Council. My name is John Bodorf with CleanEarthForKids.org. I'm here to ask you to adopt a separate subarea plan. It is important to have a SAP separate from the general plan, as that will make additional funding available for the city to fix the damage done to our environment, infrastructure, and businesses from climate change. We will need all available funds to deal with the things like sea level rise, loss of biodiversity, wildfires, extreme weather and temperatures, and more pandemics that are sure to come. It is also very important to protect the remaining open spaces in Oceanside, create wildlife corridors, and protect the precious wildlife in our area. Please keep the SAP separate. Thank you.
That concludes the registered speakers.
Thank you. Back to the council. Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, my comments. It was good to see you, Lori. Where are you? Back in the day, right? I got appointed to the North County in 2000, I think it was 2001, as soon as I got sworn in, and this was a pretty fantastic group of folks. A lot of representation from the BIA and the wildlife agencies. I think it was over half that was non-agency wildlife agencies, and there was a meeting of the minds. And this was after San Diego, the city of San Diego and the county were doing theirs. And it certainly made a lot of sense. It still makes a lot of sense to me. It's like our LCP, our Local Coastal Plan. When we approve projects, we don't have to have a separate approval by the Coastal Commission. Because we have a local coastal plan, we now have the authority to be able to grant the coastal permits. So that is a huge, huge plus for being able to get a Subarea Plan adopted, so we don't have to worry about separate agency approvals. Recently, we began, we restarted the meetings, and I think this is how it got to the rest of the council. I had been appointed to this, and I think no one else has been. And so I pretty much, I was asked by the agencies, can you get us there? Can you help us put us back together? And the biggest issue, of course, was cost. How do we address these costs? And I thought that there were a lot of concessions that were being made by the agencies to cut down on these costs. At the very end, city staff was actually agreeing that this was something that we could see a path to. And we have received some emails by some of the folks that were on this committee, basically kind of like a committee of folks who have been involved in the process before, including agency representation. And I really thought that we were getting several, a lot of concessions, especially with respect to whether or not the city would have to pay if, say, the developer, you know, if, say, a project ran out of funds, would the city then have to be liable for that, for whatever the maintenance of that habitat? And the response was no. I mean, there were a lot of really, really great concessions that had never happened before. So I still think that it is a very, very critical thing for us to do. Yes, Carlsbad has done it. The idea is that we all do it, City of San Diego. I think it would, basically, it would speed up the process for getting, as we say, housing done and other development done. And so I do hope that we can revisit this. I think that was the request, is that this be folded in, but at the, towards the end of this process, that we revisit this and say, okay, let's do this. There are all these policies that we have been working from, even though we didn't adopt it, we have been using to ensure that we have some level of balance of open space. So I'm saying all this because I believe it's going to be a three to one, and I wanted to explain why I am going to be voting no on this, because I do feel that we ought to say right now that we should, that we'll revisit this. And see, because, I mean, the whole idea is about saving money and ensuring a process that is going to go much faster, because we will have the ability to grant those permits without having to have the agencies, the several agencies, federal and state, weighing in. Councilmember Weiss, did you want to say anything? Okay, sorry. All right, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Item number 23 is introduction of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 13 of the Oceanside City Code pertaining to solid waste and recycling services, and Chapter 37, Article 7, related to water-efficient landscape regulations. And this is a report by Colleen Foster, our environmental officer. There you are. You suffer the same thing that I do. It's like, you're shorter than most people, so...
Good evening.
As am I.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. My name's Colleen Foster. I'm the environmental officer, and I'm responsible for overseeing the city's solid waste and recycling program. I'm LaRona. I apologize. I'm here today to present an introduction of an ordinance amending Chapters 13 and 37. One else updating the PowerPoint. All right, now we have the correct PowerPoint. Let me start over. I'm here today to introduce an ordinance amending Chapters 13 and Chapters 37 of the City Municipal Code. Staff is currently recommending that the city council introduce an amendment, an ordinance that amends various sections, again, of Chapters 13 and Chapter 37, related to water-efficient landscape regulations. This amendment, these amendment updates to the city's municipal code are primarily due to changes in new state legislation. Also, the amendments include conformance with other solid waste regulations. It includes existing and current service standards, so essentially updating the code to match service standards that are currently provided to the community, and then minimal corrections to grammar, spelling, and formatting. Again, the changes are proposed for both Chapter 13 and Chapter 37. Under Senate Bill SB 1383, the Short-lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Act of 2016, which is now in effect as of January 1, 2022, this regulation requires that jurisdictions adopt various ordinance updates and adopt certain standards to the ordinance and requirements. Failure to adopt these ordinances and report ordinance adoption by April 1, 2022 may disqualify the city from grant funding, and it could disqualify the city from applying for regulatory assistance, including assistance with our city's notice of intent to comply under 619, and if necessary, a corrective action plan. So essentially, the adoption of this ordinance helps protect the city against potential enforcement action by CalRecycle on the basis of SB 1383. And essentially, adoption of the ordinance helps protect us against potential fines the state could impose for violating this section of SB 1383. The chapter updates to Chapter 13, the Solid Waste Municipal Code, the amendments necessary to achieve compliance for SB 1383 include amending the ordinance to require the mandatory separation of all waste streams, including recycling and organics, as well as food scraps, adding sections that document penalties for consistency with SB 1383. Additionally, there are new requirements for the authorized collector to provide customers with containers that comply with both color and labeling requirements, inclusion of commercial and multifamily generators with these requirements, as amendments that relate to record-keeping requirements for authorized collectors, facility operators, as well as landscape service providers. And additionally includes updates that have requirements on edible food recovery organizations, as well as edible food generators, that, again, all conform with SB 1383 minimal compliance. The Chapter 37 updates related to the water landscape ordinance for the city include amendments that require a minimum compost use for landscape installations, plan check design reviews for new construction projects over 500 square feet, and then soil management reporting if available locally. Again, these requirements are all part of the SB 1383 requirements under CalRecycle. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Again, our recommendation is to adopt these ordinance amendments, introduce these ordinance amendments, and return for adoption.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We do not have any requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. Back to the council. Deputy Mayor, come.
Hi, Ms. Foster. Just a couple of quick questions. Are these similar cities across the state or jurisdictions are doing this, right?
Yes.
And they're adopting the same ordinance?
Yes.
So did we write this, or did we have our consultant HFNH do this?
We worked with our consultant and our attorney's office, as well as staff. We wrote it together. So the ordinance requirements under SB 1383, those are all very specific. The difference is you're going to see between jurisdictions, the way our municipal code is written, right? Some cities have solid waste-related requirements across the city code. The majority of our city code for solid waste is in Chapter 13.
Okay, very good. Was there, I'm just curious to try, there's no fiscal impact on this, just how much, was there a line item in HFNH? How much did it cost us to get these ordinances, boilerplate ordinances, done? Any guess?
Excellent question, Deputy Mayor. I believe the original budgeting, approximately when we were planning for doing ordinance development, was approximately, I think, $20,000 to $30,000.
Okay.
I believe we actually spent significantly less time. We had to do this fairly quickly, and we worked closely with the state, as well as the city attorney's office. So I think those costs were extremely mitigated. We just completed that in December.
Good. So less than $20,000, $30,000. Is this stuff, I mean, I know this is challenging throughout the state. Is this stuff available publicly, and can you go to CalRecycle website and find these ordinances? Or how do you, without a consultant, how do you do it?
So CalRecycle has ordinance requirements updated on their website. Again, that doesn't necessarily translate to how we actually write the code, how we would edit the code, basically the redlining of the code, and it doesn't necessarily translate to our current service standards. Some cities might have service two times a week, one time a week, one time every other week, so you have to actually still analyze your current service standards, your franchise agreements, current expectations, how your code's written, and then update it. We also worked closely with Development Services and Code Enforcement, as they had additional needs to help with the update. So they provided input as well.
Thank you for your work. I'd like to move approval of adopting ordinance or introducing ordinance.
Okay, I'd like to second that. And also, some cities actually have multiple contracts with waste haulers, and so, like City of San Diego, I think they have, what, two or three? Yeah. Okay, there is no other request to speak. Let's vote.
Mayor, I'll need to title these, we have two separate ordinances, so I'm assuming the motion includes both of the ordinances?
Yes.
Yes, so the introduction of, so I'll title them both now. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 13, revising miscellaneous provisions in the solid waste and recycling ordinance. This is also the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 37, revising water-efficient landscape regulations.
Thank you. Please vote. And this one vote covers both ordinances.
Motion approved, 3-1. Rodriguez, no.
Next is item number 24, and this is approval of residual receipts loans in a total amount not to exceed $3.5 million to Greenbrier Village LP to finance a new construction development of 60 units located on the west side of Greenbrier Drive between Apple Street and Oceanside Boulevard, of which 59 units will be for persons experiencing homelessness and extremely low-income households at risk of homelessness, and will remain affordable for 55 years and appropriations therefore. So this is a report by Leilani Hines, who's our Housing and Neighborhood Services Director. Ms. Hines?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and the public here this evening. Tonight, staff is presenting for your consideration the Greenbrier Village Affordable Housing Development as a follow-up to your previous actions taken on June 16 of this year. It is a mouthful here, but staff is recommending, as the mayor had already described, that council and the Community Development Commission approve that residual receipts loan in an amount not to exceed $3.5 million to the developer of Greenbrier Village Apartments to finance the construction of the 60-unit development located on the west side of Greenbrier Drive. 59 of those units will be set aside for homeless, near homeless, and extremely low-income persons. The action tonight is also inclusive of authorizing the city manager to execute all those documents and the actions necessary to fund the loan and the appropriations of that funding. So over a year ago, in September 2020, council directed staff to issue a notice of funding availability to prioritize those proposals to persons experiencing homelessness and are extremely low individuals and families here in Oceanside. That NOFA and RFP was issued in March 2021, and the city received a proposal from the developer, who is National Core, in partnership with San Diego Community Housing Foundation. And at its meeting on June 16, council did approve a commitment of $3.5 million to finance the project, as well as 59 project-based vouchers to assist the project. Tonight's action really represents that necessary step to prove the loans, appropriate the funding necessary to allow them to move forward in their last and final step in primary financing. The project will be located at 563 Greenbrier Drive. This property has easy connections to nearby shopping, to eateries, served by bus, and the Sprinter lines adjacent to a major transporter on Oceanside Boulevard. As stated previously, it will provide much-needed permanent supportive housing for the most vulnerable within our community, to help stabilize those families and improve their quality of life. Those 59 units will remain affordable for the useful life, determined to be 55 years, and then one unit will be reserved for an onsite property manager. So 83% of the units, or 50 units, will be studio units, nine of them will be one-bedroom units, and most of these units will be affordable to those households earning no more than 30% of the area median income, or $25,450 a year. To give you an example, an employee who's working 40 hours a week, full-time, at minimum wage, $13 an hour, earns just over $27,000 a year. So this is helping some of our workers, our essential workers out there, our minimum-wage workers. Five of those units are going to be set aside at 45% AMI, and that's to accommodate our homeless veterans and our VASH vouchers. Staff is recommending that higher AMI on those five units, because many veterans do receive a little bit more in benefits, and so to accommodate that, we're asking that the five units be set aside at 45% AMI. And while the gross rents are set, as many of you probably know, our homeless, our near-homless population may not even be able to afford $500 a month in rent, and that's where our project-based vouchers come into play and why those are necessary. So in providing housing for our extremely low-income households, the rent, you can see from the rent, that that's not enough revenue to fund the development costs or operating costs for affordable housing, or any kind of housing here in Southern California. So it takes a number of financing sources to get the job done and to build the housing necessary. The main source of funding for this project, for $25.7 million, is the low-income housing tax credit program, and the gap financing will be provided by the County of San Diego, No Place Like Home. That funding has already been committed by the county, and then your action on June 16 committed a total of $3.5 million to the project. Staff is recommending that the majority of funding come from our recent allocation of home funds under the American Rescue Plan, and then taking some of our dollars from our low- and moderate-income housing funds from the former redevelopment agency to provide for this project. And the reason being for that is there are statutory obligations or requirements under both those funding programs to fund homeless housing, housing for homeless, and for extremely low-income. So it fits these two funding sources very nicely. Inclusionary housing funds, then, will be used to fund the remaining balance. will be used to fund the remaining balance. But since we are using home funds and project-based vouchers as projects and this development cost, we will be paying prevailing wages to get the project done. The city's loans are being structured as soft financing, and that's characterized by low-interest loans, payments that are based on residual receipts versus hard payments. And that soft financing is necessary in order to attract the necessary senior financing and to be competitive in a very highly competitive 9% tax credit funding program. The city and CDC's loans are all contingent upon reviewing, receiving all of the necessary financing, particularly the tax credits, environmental review, and all the HUD, actual US Department of Housing and Urban Development actions necessary for the project. So our timeline, the applicant expects to apply for the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit in March 2021. The expectation is, is that if they're successful in their application, and this, the recommendation tonight will help them in their application, that they would receive funding in June 2021, and then immediately go into construction by December of this year, and hoping that our residents will have the ability to occupy and lease the units by late spring, summer of 2024. So with that, staff concludes our presentation and recommends that the city council and the CDC approve the residual receipts loan in a total amount not to exceed $3.5 million to Greenbrier Village LP to finance that new construction development of 60 units on Greenbrier Drive, which 59 will be affordable to extremely low persons and households, homeless persons, those at risk of homelessness, to remain affordable for 55 years, authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute all loan and related documents and the appropriation of the funding. Staff is available to answer any of your questions, and we do have representatives from the development team, Mr. John Seymour and Mr. Ted Mihahara here this evening, that are available to answer any project-specific or financing questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I remember when we, when this was presented, it's a very, very unique project in that it's really hitting the hardest to, to, to house, basically. And that is the absolute folks who are homeless and who might, may have mental health issues. I mean, for this, for this project to have been able to get the No Place Like Home funding is a huge feat. And I know we've never gotten any projects to, to qualify for that. So, and I believe, I think Escondido has maybe something similar, but this is really kind of a first for, for North County. And did you, so we do have two people from National Corps. Did you want to add anything before we start discussing this?
Madam Mayor, only to induce our team, we have Barbara Lemus from Property Management here for questions. We have Stephanie De La Torre from Hope Through Housing Foundation, and A.J. Galcagonye, Permanent Supportive Housing Director, for any questions. And Ted Mihahara, President and CEO of San Diego Community Housing Corporation.
Thank you, thank you, and welcome. Thank you for, for putting this project together. All right, to the council, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you for that presentation. Excuse me, my voice went out, so hopefully you guys can, you can hear me. California housing policy is, in my opinion, a disaster. The state allocates a certain number of housing units each county has to build or recommends build based on population. And then the counties allocate these numbers, including the amount of low-income units, which is, when I say affordable housing, low-income, that means it's government-subsidized housing. Your tax dollars are covering the cost. The problem with this entire model is it's not sustainable. When these, when affordable developers move to, you know, on a small project like this, 60 units, or we did one on Mission Avenue with, you know, I think it was over 300 units, there's hundreds and hundreds of applications that go before the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit at a state level. And there's not enough funding mechanisms to create the incentive for these developers. So we have a state that says you need to build this amount of government-subsidized units, yet there's no amount of subsidy available to even accommodate what they're telling us we have to build. So it's ass-backward. And that's just the truth. So we have, every once in a while, we'll get, we'll get a little money pot, and we'll do a little dog and pony show, and we'll wave a little flag saying, yippee, we're building affordable units. Meanwhile, the policies surrounding this fraction of a unit, I mean, this is not even going to touch the need that we have. Anybody outside of our city can apply. You can, you can come from San Jose, you can come from Borrego Springs, you can come from National City and apply and live in our city with this subsidy. It doesn't, it doesn't benefit Oceanside residents directly, but welcome, welcome to the circus of Sacramento in their housing policies. So here we are, we're going to approve this, and we're going to say good job and pat each other on the back. And meanwhile, we're not doing anything to impact the real need out in the streets. So as a city, just so you know, we're moving on updating our general plan and our inclusionary housing ordinance to where we can really partner with the private sector, the private developer, and give them clear and concise pathways and opportunities to do the building, because that's what they do best. Instead of creating a money pot of a bunch of tax dollars and then throwing it at 50 units like we're doing tonight. So I'm going to support this. We're going to approve it, but it makes me sick that we're not really satisfying the great need that our region, you know, especially a city like Oceanside, where a blue-collar community, it is expensive as hell to live in our city, and we could be doing a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. I forgot to ask, are there any requests to speak by the public?
There is one, but it's Mr. John Seymour. I didn't know if you wanted to talk.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, I thought I had asked that, and then I realized I hadn't. I just had asked the National Corps. All right, so still at the dais, Councilmember Weiss.
I have a question for staff. Who makes the determination of who gets these units? Is it the city, or is it the developer?
No, sorry, it would be the developer.
Okay, so they'll be doing all the advertisement for, do we verify the income levels, or all through them?
They'll be required, so they will be doing all the advertising and the marketing and compliance with their housing laws. In terms of compliance, they will be subject to an annual compliance by the city. And on our funding, they'll also be monitored by the county under the No Place Like Home, as well as monitored by the tax credit program as well.
Thank you.
So multiple sources of monitoring and ensuring compliance.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. I actually think it's a great project. So thank you very much. It's one of a kind, and it's, these are the units that are the hardest to build, and for this to be with wraparound services for 55 years, huge investment in Oceanside. Thank you. We have another minute. Do we have Ms. Joy Hall here? Ms. Ms. Hall, would you like to come and speak? You put in a request to, advanced request to speak for item number 27. Let's, let's go ahead and hear from you. And then we'll take up our public hearing items.
Hi. As she just said, my name is Joy Hall. I'm third generation here in Oceanside.
Yes?
Third generation here in Oceanside. My grandfather had a butcher shop here in the 1800s. I have relatives buried in the cemetery on the, by the railroad tracks.
OHS class of?
Sorry?
OHS class of?
I just wanted to say a little background that I know Oceanside, and I understand Oceanside.
Yeah.
To address what is happening, there is a dip on Dipmore and Kelly. And no one observes that dip. We had a girl, a woman, who lives on the corner. She was crossing Kelly. She was hit by a car that did not stop at Kelly, because there's a stop sign on both sides. No one stops. She was hit. They never found the truck. She was in the hospital for a couple of months. Just to give you an idea, a couple of months ago, a truck was going down the street, and it had pipes in it. He didn't see this dip. He was going speeding. Pipes flew through the air, landed in my house. I'm three houses in. There are children now on these streets. It isn't any longer, Oceanside, the residential areas have changed because you have apartment buildings on Moore's. So you don't have people going slowly because they don't have the commitment to the neighborhood that they used to. And there's no barrier there for them not to speed and hit that dip. There are grooves that are three inches into the pavement from cars hitting that dip. A bumper landed in my front yard from a car hitting, there are car parts all the time. And this doesn't happen just like once a month. This is every day. If someone were to sit and notice on the corners, there are people speeding up and down there, and they hit that dip. And then, for some reason, it's human nature, they speed even faster. They don't want to, you know, they don't want to be, um, last year, a car, a truck, had glass in it. He hit the dip, glass went flying off of his truck, landed in all of our yards. And it's just, it's dangerous. There are little babies that are on both of those corners now, on Kelly and Dipmore. And I know that there's a moratorium against putting any more stop signs or putting speed bumps in, I've been told. But that moratorium was put into place about seven or eight years ago. And that neighborhood has changed. It has changed drastically. There are young families there. It's dangerous. It's incredibly dangerous. I had over 40 people sign this petition. People are angry. They spend over $1 million for their homes, and they're not getting any protection. And that's, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but really, I'd hate for the council to reread about a child being injured seriously. And it's just a matter of time. It's really just a matter of time, people.
Isn't there a signage there that says dip?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there signage, a sign?
Oh, of course, but nobody reads signs anymore. No one.
Okay.
Really, literally, no one's, no one slows down. And no one is stopping on Kelly. I mean, they just breezed right through the stop sign. Now, the, a detective or a police officer called me, and he put up a flashing light. That did seem to help a little bit during those three days that it was up. But people's, people seem to ignore that as well. I don't know what you can do. I think a speed bump is the best alternative, but it is really, really, truly dangerous.
You know, I think a speed bump.
And I didn't come here on my own volition. All the neighbors came to me, because I'm the only retired woman that has enough time to come down here and do this for you, and to have the petition signed. But people are really upset, and they're scared. Anyone else? Thank you for your time. I wish you would give it some thought.
Thank you. Our interim Public Works Director is here. If you'd like to go ahead and...
I'm sorry?
Habib. Habib, if you could, if you could speak with our interim Public Works Director, and our chief is back there, too, is what, what was said by Councilmember Weiss. Thank you very, very much. All right, it's, it is 6 o'clock. So I'm going to go ahead and take up item number 25. And that is acceptance of the report from Q2 Data. Is Karen here? Yes. And Research LLC on the 2020 Decennial Census data to redraw the city council district boundaries in accordance with California Elections Code 21621, and receive public testimony on the composition of districts for city council offices. This is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from our council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff.
Staff and I have had several inquiries when this process been to start. Okay, so, Ms. Navarro, have we had any correspondence and our petitions?
We've had some correspondence regarding the process, but those have been forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
Okay, thank you. And the, we do have a demographer here, Karen, but this-
That is correct.
I'm going to begin with testimony by you, Ms. Navarro, our city clerk.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, Ms. Navarro, city clerk. On June 26, 2021, the city entered a professional services agreement with Q2 Data and Research to help out with our redistricting process. Tonight starts the process. After tonight, we will have three additional public hearings, as well as a final meeting to finalize the map. In addition to this, the city clerk's office is also going to be conducting four additional neighborhood meetings. We're going to have a meeting in each council district for this. But tonight, we do have our demographer, Karen McDonald, here. And of course, we also have Spanish translation available with Jesus Villasenor, who's also up here in the front, if anybody in the audience requires a Spanish translation. So I will now toss it over to Karen McDonald, our demographer.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and members of the city council. I'm sorry?
How many years has it been?
It's been, what has it been, five? Five years, I think. Thank you for having me back. I know it seems like it was just yesterday. And we went through this almost the same process, but some things have changed, and I'm just delighted to be here. Thank you for having us back, and really looking forward to working with all of you and with the community again on, you know, adjusting the city council districts that you all implemented just a few years ago. So with your permission, I will go through a little presentation to bring us all up to speed on the process, which is actually a little bit different from the districting process. So I'll walk you through it, but there's also a lot of similarities. And many of you who participated in the districting process will probably remember some of these items that I'm going to go through. So with that, here's the agenda, and I'm going to try to go through it as quickly as possible, and then leave some time so you can all ask questions, or, you know, please feel free to ask me to go into more depth. As you all know, I can talk about this for hours, and, but don't want to subject you to that if you don't want that. So, so today's agenda, introduction and background really quickly. Then we'll talk about what redistricting is, as opposed to districting. Then going through the laws governing redistricting, criteria for redistricting, and that is where you'll see a lot of the similarities from the last process. The process timeline that we've put together for you, you have to be done by April 15, or 17, rather, just like the rest of the state of California, all the local jurisdictions, they're all on the same timeline. And then we'll go through how to get involved. So by way of introduction of the entire process, as we just very briefly touched on, in 2017, the City of Oceanside transitioned from an at-large election system to a by-district election system. And you'll recall this, this was prompted by a demand letter and so forth, and there were a lot of hearings and a lot of participation. And that resulted then in the city going to four separate city council districts. The members of the city council, of course, now must live in their district to be eligible to represent it. And the voters that reside in each district get to vote on that particular city council member, or the candidates for city council that run in that particular district. So that's the difference between at-large. In an at-large election system, which is what you had before, everybody in the city got the same ballot. And now this is what's often called a more neighborhood-centric election system, where the districts are just a little bit smaller. So districting versus redistricting, I think this is probably a good thing to just go over very briefly. What we did in 2017 was the districting process. And districting is when you have this, what I call the at-large system. So you don't have any districts, and then you create them. So that is districting. Now what we're doing is redistricting. So that means we're looking at the districts that you all created in 2017, and they're now being adjusted. Redistricting usually happens every 10 years after the release of the Decennial Census. And of course, you all know that the census was really late this time. You know, there was COVID. All of these things happened, and the census data didn't come out until fairly late in the process. So a lot of people are really struggling now to, to engage in these processes. But luckily, planning for this particular process was, you know, had already started last year. So you're well underway, and there's not going to be any problems here with respect to getting this process done and having enough time for people to participate. The Decennial Census data are used to equalize the populations of the districts, and that just means that when, you know, we all filled out the census form, either online or when somebody came by, those data, so everybody who participated in the census- so everybody who participated in the census, so it's not citizens or, you know, people over 18. It's basically everybody who was counted by the census. Those people are used, that's the population that's used to equalize the populations of the districts. So kids are in there, you know, permanent residents are in there, anybody who filled out the census form. What redistricting does is it provides an opportunity to bring the existing districts into compliance with all of the redistricting criteria. And that's particularly important now since California in 2019 passed a new law. And that basically gave a new framework to redistricting for counties and for cities. And that's called the Fair Maps Act. So the Fair Maps Act kind of made everything a little bit more uniform. Before, people had their own criteria and perhaps different processes. And the Fair Maps Act in 2019 essentially said, okay, everybody, we're going to clarify how to do this. And that's what everybody's subject to now. So with that, the laws governing redistricting, and again, if you participated in, in the districting process just a few years ago, you know that the U.S. Constitution gives us our first and foremost criterion, which is population equality. And then there is federal law. And under federal law, what we mean is the Federal Voting Rights Act. So that's in comparison to the California Voting Rights Act, which governed the districting process a few years ago. Once we're in redistricting, the California Voting Rights Act does not apply anymore. So this is now the Federal Voting Rights Act that we're dealing with. And then there's the California Elections Code. And that's again, what I just mentioned, the Fair Maps Act, which clarified processes and criteria. And here it is. The Fair Maps Act. Fair maps, it basically spells fair and inclusive redistricting for municipalities and political subdivisions. Pretty catchy. And it addresses local redistricting, as I mentioned. You can look it up in California Elections Code Sections 21600 to 21609. And that addresses city redistricting. But in other elections code sections, it also talks about counties and so forth. It creates a state-mandated local program and details the required processes for local redistricting, as I mentioned. So what is that process that the Fair Maps Act has determined that everybody has to follow? It has strict timelines and requirements for the process. So there's a minimum of four hearings. Again, this is a minimum. And of course, as we heard our city clerk already outline, we're going to be engaging in more than just these four hearings. So at least one hearing has to be held prior to creating a draft map. And that is just to make sure that there's actually an opportunity for public input before people start drawing maps. A workshop led by staff or consultant can be held in lieu of one of the pre-draft hearings. Two hearings have to be held after creating a draft map. And that is to get feedback on the draft map so that people can weigh in and say, okay, this works, this does not work. And to give the council an opportunity to make adjustments based on the feedback that is received. The draft maps have to be posted for feedback. And there is very specific timelines for how long in advance the hearings, agendas, and drafts have to be, so that the dates have to be posted. The Fair Maps Act also outlines the general components of a redistricting, which basically are most prominently a website. And that website has to remain live for 10 years. And that's essentially just to make sure that if somebody, you know, moves to Oceanside four years from now and they want to know what happened? How did these districts come into being? What happened there? They can go to this website and everything that you're seeing below the website will still be on there. So, so all of the public hearing dates, the draft plan development, all of this PowerPoint will be on there. So essentially, it's your one-stop shop to find out how to participate and how to get access to documents and then also to redistricting tools and so forth. So the public hearings are listed on there. Draft plan development is part of the Fair Maps Act also. Posting requirements, how long in advance? Do dates and locations have to be posted? There's a big section about public access, including applicable language translations and interpretation. And of course, we have our colleague here. If anybody needs translation services or interpretation. And, and then public input also. The public maps, the Fair Maps Act says that public input has to be received no matter how people would like to provide it, in, you know, oral, written, or electronic form. So a little bit more about public education and input and transparency. So there are the two prongs, really the big prongs of the Fair Maps Act, which one are outreach and education, and then there's meetings and workshops. Under outreach and education, the Fair Maps Act says that the city has to provide information to city media organizations, including media organizations that serve language minority communities. And of course, we're working on that. We need to provide information through good government, civil rights, civil engagement, civic engagement, community groups or organizations that are active in the city. And then the meetings and workshops have to start at a set time, which is why we started today at 6 o'clock, as you saw on the agenda. So it's time certain. And that is just to make sure that people can more easily participate and kind of plan their participation around a schedule that actually will be kept. Because as you saw, your city council is incredibly busy. There's a lot of things on the agenda. And oftentimes, I'm sure everybody here has sat in a city council meeting very late, just waiting for their item to be called. For redistricting in California now, that item has to be at a time certain so that nobody has to question when it's going to be called. The city has to collect public input, including on communities of interest. And that's going to be a really big part of this process. And then again, live interpretation services are available for non-English language speakers for certain languages. And the meeting locations have to be accessible to people with disabilities. The project website, as I said already, has to remain live for 10 years, has to provide all this information, contains all of the educational materials, everybody, everything that we have developed and will be developing, everything that happens will be posted on the website. And it will also have mapping files. So as there are draft maps or, you know, iterations of maps developed, they will be on the website along with files that people can download if they want to map based on those files themselves. And it will also host the drafts and the final district maps. So let's get to the meat of the matter here. What are the mapping criteria? So this is the thing that has really changed the most in California under the Fair Maps Act. Aside from, you know, really just specifying what the process has to look like, the criteria now are ranked in order of priority. And if anybody here has participated in the state of California redistricting, then this will look very familiar to you because this basically just mimics what the state of California's redistricting commission had to use to draw their lines. There's a tiny little bit of a difference there, but it's essentially the same thing. And also in ranked order. So first, there is of course, compliance with the U.S. and the California constitutions. Really no surprise that you have to comply with the constitution, obviously. But what do we get? Equal population. So we need to equalize the districts. When we're done, they all have to have roughly the same number of people. Second is compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act, as I mentioned. And that addresses racial and language minorities. Then we have contiguity. What is that? It means that you, your districts have to be in one piece. You can't have like a district that has a little chunk here, three districts in between, and another little chunk over there. They have to be in one piece. That's contiguity. There has to be respect for local neighborhoods and communities of interest, which people frequently refer to as coys. I'm guilty of that. So communities of interest, coys, that's a really big criterion in California. Very prominent because that is where everybody gets to weigh in and say, here is my community, please keep us together. And that community could consist of many different things. It could be your neighborhood. It could be, you know, the area around your park that you're working on. And I'll go through some examples in a little while. But essentially, that is a really important piece that really gives everybody an opportunity to participate and ask for consideration essentially when these districts are drawn. Boundaries should be easily identifiable and understandable by residents. And what that essentially means is, you know, don't cut through somebody's backyard. Stay on a street so that people know this is where the boundary line is. Compactness is the sixth criterion. So again, these are all in order of importance. And compactness in California means you should not be bypassing nearby population. So basically, don't reach. This is the thing where people oftentimes talk about gerrymandering, which is always a term that comes up when people talk about redistricting. So when people think of gerrymandering, they think of districts that look really funny. They maybe, they have tentacles or things like that. So compactness is the criterion that tries to rein that in. And in California, we have specified what that means. It means if you have people living here, then you shouldn't go around those people and go all the way out to grab some people because that would make your district basically look really funny. So that is our criterion in California. And that actually distinguishes us from the rest of the U.S. They have different criteria and not usually well-defined. So we're a little ahead of the game here. And seventh is the non-criteria, really. Do not favor or discriminate against political parties. It's the keep politics out of the process when it comes to political parties. And with that, I'm going to go to the next slide in a little bit more detail about equal population. So the U.S. Constitution requires districts to have reasonably equal populations. And people often refer to that as the one-person-one-vote criterion. Other issues that the U.S. Constitution brings to the process of redistricting is the 14th Amendment, which talks about equal protection. And then the 15th Amendment, which bans racial discrimination in voting. Mostly, for redistricting in this particular context, we will be speaking about the one-person-one-vote, equal-population piece. So what is the ideal population per district? So how do we even know that? What, what we know is what the census told us the population is for Oceanside. Then there is a little caveat to that where the state of California has a law that requires the, the total population for each city and county to be adjusted just a little bit based on reallocating people that are incarcerated that used to live in the specific jurisdictions. So there's a little bit of a change from what the census has, has provided. So for redistricting, the total population is a tiny little bit different. But what we're working on here is 174,578 persons. So that's the total population we have to use for redistricting. And then since you have four city council districts, you just take that number and you divide it by four. And that is your ideal population for each district. So that's how many people you want to land with when you're done. You want to have roughly 43,645 people per district. But how equal is equal? So for Congress, you have to be very precise. So you basically can only, what's called deviate. So you can be plus or minus the ideal population just by one person. And if you're looking at the congressional districts that were just finalized for the state of California, that's what you're seeing. They really are just, they differ by one person throughout the state. For lower-level districts, for example, you know, your assembly, your senate, your, you know, Board of Equalization, your city council, your special district, they all have more flexibility. And you can usually be within plus-minus 5% of the ideal population and you're going to be fine. So why does that matter? It matters because, let's assume you have a neighborhood, for example, and you're just at your ideal population, but your neighborhood is split. So you want to keep that neighborhood together though because it's important for people, they've told you that they want to stay together in this district. That plus-minus 5% gives you that opportunity to grab a few more people, keep that neighborhood together, and still be okay under the law. So that's why that's important. And it's, it's a pretty good law, actually, this plus-minus 5% thing and rule. So, so what do we have now? So these are the districts that you all constructed just a few years ago. So these are your current city council districts. And we merged in the new census data and figured out which ones are overpopulated and which ones are underpopulated. Remember that rule of thumb of plus-minus 5%. So you don't want to be, you don't want to be further away from, from that ideal population than plus-minus 5%. And what you're seeing here is that in District 1, you actually have a deviation, let's call it deviation, of negative 8.82%. That means that there's about 8.82% of the total population is missing there for that district to become equal along, in accordance with the ideal population. So that district is underpopulated and it would need to pick up some population to get within that 5%. District 2 looks pretty good. It's only over by 0.39%, so it's a lot less than even 1%. District 3 is kind of getting close. It's overpopulated by 4.51%. And then District 4 is overpopulated by 3.91%. So essentially, when you're looking at these districts, what you want to look at is how do we make them all equal in population and land within plus-minus 5%? Let's talk about criterion 2 really quickly. So we've already done a preliminary voting rights analysis. So I'm going to just walk you through this very quickly. And since you have this PowerPoint available and I'm also here and available for questions, I, I won't go into too much detail here. What, Section 2 of the Federal Voting Rights Act, which applies to redistricting nationwide, to all jurisdictions that conduct elections? What that says is that it prohibits the denial or abridgement of voting rights on the basis of racial or language minority status. And language minorities are defined as Asian, Native American, Alaskan native, and Spanish heritage. And it does not apply to any other language groups, you know, European language groups, whatever, Swedish people, Norwegian speakers, does not, does not apply to those fellows. But these are the protected language minority groups. And what it does is it protects practices that have either the purpose or the effect of discriminating on the basis of race or language minority status. In redistricting, we also talk about a term that's called vote dilution. And electoral systems can limit the ability to elect the candidate of choice in various ways. An at-large election system can make it impossible for a large minority group to elect a candidate of choice when the majority votes against them. And single-member districts, which is what we have here, they can be drawn in ways that can minimize voters' ability to elect a candidate of choice also. And if you have those situations, that is considered to be a dilution of minority voting strength. And I know it's really technical, so I'm, I'm really going to just fly through this. I know it's 6 o'clock and many of you are after 6:00 and many of you have been here for a while. But again, I am available for questions. So really quickly, there is a, there is a case called Thornburg versus Jingles that basically, that, that governs the application or the implementation of Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. And the Jingles criteria are minority group must be large enough to constitute a majority in the district, must be geographically compact, vote cohesively, and there must be evidence of polarized voting against the minority group. If you find that anywhere within your jurisdiction, then you have a, you have, you know, you have to basically draw, under certain circumstances, a Section 2 district. And we did a preliminary voting rights analysis and we found that you are not subject to this rule right now. But I did want to make that clear, that we did look at it and you're in compliance. So having talked about a lot of race in redistricting and ethnicity in redistricting, at the same time, the Supreme Court has also said, well, you cannot use race as a predominant criterion. So essentially, with redistricting, you just have to be careful. Race can be a criterion, language minority is a criterion, ethnicity can be a criterion. It can be taken into consideration as part of communities of interest and so forth. It just cannot be the only thing that you're looking at. So you should not be looking at race and. So you should not be looking at race and basically just ignore compactness, contiguity, and communities of interest. Contiguity, as I said already, that's a district where all parts are adjacent to another part. So basically, district has to be in one piece. And if you have, you have two districts, or you have a district where, where the two areas are only meeting at, at the adjoining corners, that's called point contiguity, and that is not permissible in California. So you have to have a little bit more area. And if anyone is really interested in this, I can show you some examples of that at a, at a later meeting of what that means, point contiguity and so forth. And also areas that are separated by water and not connected by a bridge, they are not contiguous. So local neighborhoods and communities of interest, this is really the important one. Because neighborhoods and communities of interest, this is where we need everybody to participate. Please, and just let us know, where are your neighborhoods? Where are your communities of interest? And I think a really great way to participate in this redistricting would be to take a look at where these district lines are right now and make sure your community isn't split right now. I mean, we know things happen. It's California. California is a very mobile state. Things happen in California. There may be communities of interest that were not there five years ago. There may be neighborhoods here now that we were not aware of five years ago, or perhaps that kind of grew into existence. So we want to know about them, just so that the city council has an opportunity to keep them in mind when they're redrawing these lines and adjusting the population of the district. There is really not many limitations on what a community of interest can be. And, you know, generally, we're looking for people that really live and work in the community to let us know where those communities are. Here are a couple of examples, and they can include current situation or goals that a community may be working on. So for example, you can say, we are a community of interest because we are working on common employment for our area. We don't have a lot of opportunities. We're working with a employer to come in. That could be a community of interest. The goal of a group of people that are living in an area closely together within the city of Oceanside could be, we want to expand opportunities for our, our neighbors and for our community members. We want to bring in development. We want to bring in business. There are social interests that could be, we organize around the school, the local neighborhood school. Or we have a shared culture and a shared heritage, and we get together, and we all live in the same area, and we need to be staying together in a district because we need representation. People may be living around a transportation hub or maybe around a freeway. And, you know, there are concerns about that. So they want to stay together so that they can be more effectively represented, perhaps. And then another very frequent one that we see is parks, that people organize around parks, either get a park implemented, or keep a park safe, or clean, or, you know, whatever. So there could also be a goal of improving recreational opportunities. Maybe people are working on public safety. We know that a lot from neighborhoods, that people are working together, they have neighborhood watches, and they perhaps are working actively with their city council member, and they would like to stay together. So that's what we need to know for this particular criterion to be really effective. And again, neighborhoods are very frequently, by people on the ground, thought of as communities of interest. So how do you document your community of interest? Think about what bonds your community, what defines your community, what's your mission, what do you all have in common? Explain maybe what's different outside of your community as opposed to inside your community. I know from my community where I live, I know exactly where my community ends, and I know what's, what's different outside of my community because there's a large street, and as soon as you cross it, the housing stock changes, the people that live there change, you know? It's like, seems like everybody is a lot younger than the people that live in my neighborhoods. So, so that, that's the kind of stuff where you have an opportunity to kind of think about, you know, where is my community, really? How, how do I define that? And then we need to know where the community is located in the city because we're creating a map, right? So in order to put this effectively onto a map, we need to know where you are. So you could write down the boundaries. The state has a community of interest tool called Drum ICA Community that you can use to map your community of interest and then submit it to the city. And we have some instructions on the website on how to use that. It would be really great if people could participate and just let us know about your communities by February 10th, because then those communities and where your community is can be considered in the draft maps. That doesn't mean you cannot let us know later about your community, but for the draft maps, that will be a really good deadline to submit some information. Easily identifiable districts, I've already gone through this. We want the district lines to be straightforward and respect roads or natural features. The lines just need to make sense. And then compactness, I've also already discussed, don't bypass nearby areas of population. And it's just a good thing to remember that this is one of your lowest-ranked criteria, so we don't have to go overboard with this. And then finally, Criterion Seven, no politics. You know, don't adopt city council boundaries for the purpose of favoring or discriminating against a political party. And then also, the one constraint that we have with communities of interest is that it may not, they may not include relationships with political parties, incumbents, or political candidates. So essentially, if there's a group here that has worked with somebody to get that person elected, perhaps, that's not what would make you a community of interest for redistricting purposes. You may be a community of interest, but for this purpose, you, you would not be able to qualify, essentially. And that's really the only constraint you have for communities of interest. The next slides will give you a little timeline overview. And again, I would point you to the website. All of this is available on the website. There are quite a few hearings and meetings, and I would encourage you to please participate. They, you know, they will be hybrid. You, you can, you can participate however you would like. Today, we're doing a little kickoff, of course, and then on January, no, this is, yeah, we have January 19th is a community outreach meeting. January 22nd, we have another community outreach meeting. And there are in the community or here, then January 26th. So you see, you have a very busy couple of months ahead of you. We're continuing February 2nd and 5th, then the 9th, the 23rd, March 9th. Your draft maps are going to be up in mid-February, and then there will be a feedback hearing series, essentially, so you can give feedback, and then the city council can make additional changes to the draft maps. And, oopsies, hold on. And, yeah, and then we have public hearing number five, where we receive additional feedback and vote on a final map. And that's going to be March 9th, if things work out. So it's a relatively fast-moving process, but also has plenty of opportunities to participate. So why should you participate? If you're here, if you've listened, you already know this, to make sure that we know about your community of interest, of course, to give your community a voice and make sure it has an equal access to the political process. Encourage citizens to register and vote and remain politically engaged, and to help shape a redistricting plan that provides communities a meaningful opportunity to elect candidates who will represent your interests on issues that are important to all of your lives. How to get involved? This is a good slide. If you, you know, want to get your neighbors to come out, this is, this has all of the information about how to participate. You know, you can testify, you can submit written testimony, send supporting information to the city. You know, at a hearing by mail, you can drop it off at the city clerk's office via email, at redistricting@oceanside.ca.org. Via phone, we have a phone number, 760-435-3001. And the website is also live, and it's on the city's website, so www.cioceanside.ca.us/gov/clerk/elections. It's big. And then redistricting_2022ASP. So this is a good slide to perhaps print out, but please do take a look and please participate, and thank you so much. I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we do. And just want to thank Karen again for presenting. And just to wrap up the presentation, we do want the public to come out. We want as much public testimony as possible at these public hearings. And we do have two requests to speak on this item.
Okay, and this is a public hearing, so you do not have to have submitted a slip. So let's first hear from the two people who requested to speak.
Our first public comment is from Arlene Hammerschmidt, to be followed by Rob Howard.
This one good, too?
Yeah. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I was happy to hear, Arlene Hammerschmidt, Fire Mountain area of Oceanside, longtime resident, longtime involved. I was happy to hear that the consultant mentioned you can, how to include everybody. And my question is, I think I heard you say you can participate in any manner that you'd like, like online, live. Does that include Zoom?
Yes, so go ahead and respond. Is that any, we could, we could respond to that afterwards, or do you have any other questions?
Well,
This is your three minutes.
The biggest one is, you know, we want to include everybody, obviously. So I'm hoping and encouraging that we have all modes of inclusion for all of the hearings as well, as the ones that might be presented to city council. And right now, we don't have Zoom access for doing this. You have to come here to do it. So if we're going to include everybody, then I really urge Zoom access for inclusion for these redistricting hearings, including those held as a part of city council meetings.
My understanding is yes, and they're, he's going to give you a bigger response, or they're going to give you a bigger response. But do you have any other questions? Because this is your three minutes. Okay. Why don't you go ahead and respond to that?
My question is, how are we going to do that?
There, for, at least for the four community meetings that we're going to be having in each district, we will have Zoom capabilities because those community meetings are not subject to the Brown Act. The city council meetings are subject to the Brown Act, and the council did meet back in October, and we discontinued Zoom at that meeting. If there is a policy change, that would have to go up to before the city council to decide whether to adapt Zoom for these public hearings or for any future public hearings, that is entirely a decision of the city council because it is subject to the Brown Act. And there was that Senate bill that kind of limits what we can and can do with Zoom at city council meetings, but that's entirely a city council decision. However, because the community meetings are not subject to the Brown Act, we will have in-person testimony, and we will accept testimony via Zoom at all the community meetings that we have listed. And if you can't make it to the city council meeting or have concerns, we can definitely take your public testimony by emailing the city clerk's office, mailing us a letter, calling us up, submitting something in writing beforehand. And that way, your testimony is also received by the city clerk's office and will be distributed to council as well. But as far as Zoom at city council meetings, that, that is a policy decision by the city council.
Thank you. So we will have the website very clearly state which meetings can be attended by Zoom, which means you can, you can see it and also you could speak at it. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay.
Rob Howard?
Mayor, city council members, Rob Howard, Oceanside resident. For disclosure, I'm a member of the Police and Fire Commission, but I'm here speaking on my own behalf. The piece about, I understand the requirements about the Brown Act, but I would ask the council to really consider, so that even those public meetings and every opportunity to get public input, because I had a senior that wanted to come, but had a potential COVID exposure and cannot participate, and said, I want to hear what they're saying because oftentimes, the comments and questions are based on the information provided at that particular meeting. So I would ask the council to really consider that. It is one of those things that where, as a public servant, I would ask you to serve as much as you can, and allowing people, I know it's extra work, but it's also extra work for people to give up their time and come down here at this time in the evening. People care about this. This is once every 10 years. And so I would ask that. The other question I would have for the demographer, oftentimes, on the website, to try to draw those maps, it's really difficult unless you have a really good computer. Those programs aren't that great. If people have ideas of what they think will work, is it possible to send that to you prior to the meetings and you develop those maps so that, because I think there'll be, of course, well, you know this because you do this for a living, but there's so many gyrations and shapes and sizes, and our population changes would require a few tweaks and that the issue around neighborhoods would be so critical. So that's really what I want to know. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, for your time.
Includes the registered speakers, but this is a public hearing.
Right. So it looks like Karen would like to respond to that. Is that right?
Yes. Yes, so however you would like to get information about, you know, district changes to us, we will work with you and figure out how to implement that. Also, we have a line drawing tool that's available. If there's any questions or any problems with that, there should be a help button on there, please just reach out. We'll have somebody sit with you virtually and just figure out how to make that work for you. So we really want to make sure that you can participate. Just let us know what you need, okay? And I'll make sure that there is a, a good, like, email or, like, help button on the website so that people know how to reach us. So thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. This is a time for public input on this particular item, which is item number 25, having to do with redistricting. If you wish to speak, please approach the podium. Please provide your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, this is Patty Kirshman. I didn't expect to speak tonight, but it, it always prompts questions, right? Just to comment with absolutely no disservice to the presenter, who did an excellent job and had excellent slides. But this, if anyone's watching or anyone in the room, this whole district thing is really a disservice to you all, and it's a waste of people's time and money. How long did we listen to the presentation, and how many forums are you going to have for this? And the money involved in this, if, if the state's redistricting is any example, when they put Carlsbad, our community, down with Coronado, I mean, that is not good districting. So be aware of that. Also, I had some questions. What, what did the city do? Oceanside's a community. What did they ever do before 2017, when we were able to somehow elect candidates who would best serve our neighborhoods without the artificial boundaries that this districting requires when you're on a boundary line and your neighbor's on the next one? So we are all one community, Oceanside, and it's, it's, anyway, that's my comment. The other question I had of the presenter, did you say the incarcerated are numbers that are to be included in the population? Can you answer?
Did you have any other questions, by the way? Because I'd like her to.
I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Oh, I'm out of time?
No, no, just keep asking your questions, and after you finish, she'll answer.
Okay, okay. Number one, are you including the incarcerated in the population demographic and why? Number two, if I declined to state my ethnicity and language, how do I figure into that population, that redistricting? Because the last time I checked, it was optional, okay? And your first slide showed that race and language were, as well as the number of people, were criteria. And then later on in the slides, it said that we can't give a lot of preference to race. So it seemed contradictory. And then question number three, one of the criteria was minority must become a majority. If that is true, then the minority is no longer minority. So how, what did that criteria mean? And number three, can you, when you have these forums or on your website, put the street names? Because it's kind of a generalized, we can't figure out, you know, if I live on this side of the street and someone else lives here, where, you know, what district we're in. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And I am having people respond to the questions immediately so we don't lose any of the kind of tenure and, you know, the meaning of the questions. So go ahead. I think there were more than three. She kept saying, and number three, number three. So. So there were at least six there. So go ahead, Karen.
Thank you so much for those questions, yes. And I will be the first one to tell you that it is, the Voting Rights Act's very confusing, and all of the laws that, that came and kind of clarified things. So on one hand, you have to take race and ethnicity into consideration, but on the other hand, you cannot, it cannot be predominantly taken into consideration. It's a really complex area, and I hear you. And as I mentioned earlier, there, there was a preliminary assessment of whether the Federal Voting Rights Act requires the city of Oceanside to do something specific with the districts, and the answer was no. So we don't actually have to worry about that particular bracket. I mentioned it, and I went through detail, through all of the detail, because it is a requirement in California law and actually in, really in any jurisdiction in the United States, that the Federal Voting Rights Act is the second criterion that you have to assess. So we did that assessment, but essentially, we're, we're good. So we're fine with that. Let me go to the incarcerated population really quickly. There was a law that was passed in 2011, I believe it was, that required that people that were enumerated, enumerated, so basically counted by the census, in facilities under the control of the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. So it's basically the state, the state's prisons. And that those persons that were enumerated there were supposed to be reallocated to their last known residential address. So the census counts people where they are. But under California law, we then have to take people that are incarcerated in the state facilities and then look at their previous addresses and then move them back into those jurisdictions. Okay? So that's what happens. And what that does is, it actually gives a little bit more population usually to the, to the, to the urban areas, and it removes population from the rural areas. The reason for why that was done was that the rural areas in redistricting, in particular statewide, used to have a little bit more power because they had more people that didn't really stem from their communities, and people felt like those, those persons were not really being represented by anybody in the rural areas. So that's why they were technically, the data of those people were moved back. The people weren't moved back. They're still incarcerated. You know, the data of those people were basically added to the urban jurisdictions. So they are being counted. If they originated in Oceanside, then they would have been counted in Oceanside for the purpose of redistricting. And I think that, and the labeling of the maps, absolutely. When we're in the community meetings, we will have a live map, and then we can zoom in, and we can look at all of the street boundaries and, in, in more detail and actually really see what, what goes where and what is where. And I think that's pretty much.
I think she also asked, what is this majority-minority question?
Yeah, and again, that is a piece of the Voting Rights Act. So the majority-minority districts, they come in under the Voting Rights Act, and we did a preliminary assessment, and we will not have to construct a majority-minority district because we don't have an area where a minority group could constitute a majority in a district in Oceanside. That is also compact, contiguous, and, you know, there's racially polarized voting and all of that. So.
So her question was?
Yes.
If a minority becomes a majority, they're no longer a minority. So these are terms of art. Minority really means certain communities, ethnic or racial communities in California. It's very specific to California. But you're, but what, what Karen is saying is, we don't have that issue that's going to be coming up. That issue's not going to come up, so we don't have to, you know, if you, so there is no minority that's, that's, that could become a majority in any of our districts currently. Okay? So any other folks who would like to come and give input? Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make a point.
If you could say your name.
Katie Taylor, I live in Fire Mountain. I think the redistricting done for San Diego County was atrocious. It was insulting, and many people don't approve of how those maps were done. And I hope we don't go through the same experience with what we're going to do here in Oceanside. Two questions, and just to clarify, if I went on your redistricting maps tonight, could I zoom in and see the streets that are actually separating those boundaries? Because there's nothing we can do until we can identify those actual boundary lines. And we all know the streets. You tell me a street, I know the boundary line. But is that possible today?
Do you have any other comments?
Okay, the other question is, is the military population, is there a separate thing you're doing for the military population that's here? And the, do you have a number of how many incarcerated people you're adding to our population? Thank you.
Thank you.
May I?
Are there any other speakers? Councilmember Weiss would like to know. Okay. Yeah, so Wade, hold off on those three questions. Go ahead.
Just briefly, I just wanted to know.
Please provide your name.
My, excuse me, my name is Rita Loria. And we are a very mobile society, and I understand that this redistricting is being done upon the last census data. What happens to the people that have moved since, like the incarcerated? They move constantly from one facility to a next. What about just people that aren't incarcerated? Anybody that has moved? How are they taken into consideration?
Okay, let me see if there are any other requests from the public to speak on this item. Okay, if not, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the hearing. And Karen, if you could respond to those questions.
I can. Thank you so much. On the boundaries, whether you can see them tonight, I am sure that there is a map. I would have to look for the link, and I will do that tonight. And if it's not easily findable, I will make sure that it is findable on the website. Okay? So I will do that. Regarding how many incarcerated, I will also get back to you on that one. And I could probably do it by the end of the meeting, so I just need to pull up my, my laptop and just look it up because I have it in my laptop. What happened to people that have moved in? So, so again, the incarcerated population did not move here, okay? So this is a, this is basically a fictitious population that was added just to your total population, just for redistricting, nothing else, okay? And what, what happened with people that moved since the census? This is always an issue because essentially, the census just happens every 10 years. So, you know, you make, you work with the population that the census gives you, and then even if there's an influx, a pretty large influx, usually nothing happens, honestly. And then, you know, 10 years from now, you reevaluate the districts and then, you know, you equalize the population that is reported at that point. So that's just kind of how that works. And I think that's what I had. Am I missing?
Right, so redistricting has to be based on the US census.
Oh, military. What happened with?
On the latest US census.
Thank you so much. I apologize. The military population was reported. I'm sorry?
No, he, you can go ahead and respond.
Okay. The military population was reported by the census under certain rules and regulations, so there were no adjustments made. So essentially, military population was already included in the census. So, thank you.
And just real quickly, I'm on the redistricting website right now. The street names are on there. They are on there. If you zoom in. Yeah, they are on there. And again, any type of testimony, whether you have opinions about what district it is, even if you think the whole process is baloney and you don't agree with the laws in Sacramento, we want to hear everything, the good, bad, and the ugly. So please, I encourage everybody, tell your neighbors, tell your friends, post it on social media, to come out to the community meetings. We want to get as much testimony as possible from everybody.
Thank you. Any other comments before? Okay, Mr. Mellon, did you have any comments?
No, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, all right. Well, this is basically a kickoff for our redistricting. Again, it's redistricting, not districting. So thank you very much, Karen, for the very detailed report. And I, I actually thought I knew what we were going to be doing, and I learned a lot just through your, you know, taking us through the process. So the motion that we need to make here is to accept the report.
There's really no report. It was an oral report. There's, there's no written report to provide to you. I think independent, yeah, there's no need for a vote tonight.
Okay, because it says, accept the report. I assumed that it was the report, that was the staff report along with the, that includes the, the slide presentation.
Yeah, I don't think there's a report beyond what's already in the, the packet. Zeb, do you think a motion's necessary?
I'll think a motion is necessary because it's just to, just receive an oral report from our demographer.
Exactly.
Okay, I've seen this before, and I, we've done it before. So, okay, all right. Any, any other questions from the council before we finish with this item? Councilmember Weiss, okay. Councilmember Weiss, did you want to? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Thank you for coming, coming down here. Really appreciate your guidance on this. Item number 26 is adoption of a resolution approving development plan, RD 20 dash 00004, conditional use permit and regular coastal permit for the construction and operation of a new single-story, 1,073-square-foot drive-through restaurant on a vacant 0.25-acre site located at 801 North Coast Highway. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from commissioners. We're sitting here as commissioners, and regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff and several community members.
Staff and the community.
Same thing.
Staff.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, is there any correspondence and/or petitions?
All.
There's, all correspondence received prior to the meeting was forwarded to the council.
Thank you. So our testimony is going to begin with Scott Nightengel, our senior planner. And this is a Starbucks. Oh, there it is.
Thank you. Honorable mayor, council members, members of the public, I'm Scott Nightengel, here to present agenda item number 26 for a development plan and conditional use permit and regular coastal permit. Staff recommends that the Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving a development plan, the use permit, and a regular coastal permit for the construction and operation of a new, single-story, 1,073-square-foot drive-through restaurant on a vacant 0.25-acre site located at 801 North Coast Highway. The development plan is actually for the actual construction of the building itself. The conditional use permit per the zoning ordinance is required. Any type of drive-through restaurant operation is required per Article 12 of the Downtown Zoning Ordinance. And a regular coastal permit is required due to the project's location within the non-appellable area of the coastal zone. A little background on the site, the site is currently vacant and was previously utilized as a service station back in 2000s, early 2000s. There was a Phase 1 environmental that was conducted to ensure that all the underground tanks have been removed of hazardous waste and any hazardous soil. On April 2021, Starbucks restaurant present, was presented to the Downtown Advisory Committee where it was recommended for approval on a 6-1 vote. On December 15th, the city council and the, acting as Community Development Commission, made final approval of a zone and land use, or a local coastal program amendment to the Downtown Zoning Ordinance to allow for streamlining of certain commercial uses and also permitting drive-through uses within certain districts. And this amendment specifically allows drive-through uses within this sub-district where it's located, which is Subdistrict 7B of the zoning ordinance. And also, in December of 2021, the applicant held a community outreach meeting via Zoom where 20 participants participated and were online. Some of their concerns were regarding traffic and drive-through stacking, but a majority of the, the attendees were in support of the project. Here's the project, where the project is located. It is zoned 7B, which allows for commercial, hotels, mixed uses, and also restaurants and drive-through uses. It's surrounded by other downtown-type zoning. You have 7B north to the north, D13, which allows for commercial and multifamily uses, D9, mixed use and commercial uses, and D5 to, to the west, single-family and multifamily uses. Here's an image of the site. Like I said, it consists of 10,890 square feet and is currently vacant. Here's an image looking from the intersection. As you can see, there's an existing, two existing curb cuts off of Coast Highway, one off of Neptune. The Coast, the Coast Highway curb cut will be removed and reconfigured back with the curb and gutter, new curb gutter sidewalk, and the, as well as the Neptune, and the new access will be provided further to the west. There's some images of the surrounding area. You have a gas station directly to the east, another vacant lot just directly to the, to the south, and a liquor store, and a mix of multifamily and single-family to the west, and also a portion of the hotel's rear parking lot and a portion of the hotel to the west. This development would include, like I said, a single-story, 1,703-drive-through restaurant with a maximum height of 24 feet. A majority of the building would be dedicated to kitchen prep and service area, while the remaining area will be dedicated for two ADA-accessible restrooms. There will be an attached open lattice patio cover, which would function, function primarily as the overall seating, which would accommodate approximately 16 patrons. Staff worked with the architect to design the site with the drive-through use being placed away from the neighboring residential to the south, and also placement of the building would function as a buffer or a shield for vehicles within view of the driveway, looking from Neptune. The proposed drought-tolerant landscaping, as you see here, would also function as a visual and sound barrier, and not only beautify the site, but also the neighborhood. The site is 16% landscaping. We worked with them on providing some additional street trees on the Neptune side parkway. The reason why there is no street trees on the Coast Highway side is because there will be future improvements at some time when we implement the Coast Highway roundabout there. Here's an image of the vehicle stacking. As discussed within the staff report, there is a potential for six-car stacking from the menu, the menu ordering board, which would exceed the required five-car stacking. But in total, there's approximately 15 vehicle queuing, if you were to measure from the entrance, which provides an ample amount of, of queuing for any type of, of drive-through use, regardless of their demand. We, we do have a condition, condition number 881, that speaks to a management plan that shall be recorded to provide details on, for onsite employee assistance to basically move the traffic along. So they'll have an employee out there with an iPad, once the, the queuing reaches up to 10, just, just to speed up the ordering. And that'll primarily, mostly only be in the peak hour demands, which would most likely only be in the morning. Here's an image of the building. Staff worked with the architect to provide aesthetically pleasing building, knowing that this is a gateway to Oceanside. We have here a contemporary architecture design, provides clean, streamlined design that would complement not only the site, but the neighborhood as well, and just the whole downtown area as you come off of Highway 76 or off of North Coast Highway. We hope that this will influence redevelopment of the older and outdated sites within the area. So when reviewing this project, staff reviewed the project based on the following. There's general plan and land use compliance. It adds a balance of commercial land uses within a visitor-serving district. The proposed commercial use introduces an economically viable commercial restaurant within the Coast Highway corridor, also provides not only a vehicle-oriented use, but a pedestrian use. We have high hotels uses here. We, we have some future mixed-use projects with a high number of apartments, and so it'll service not only the residents, but the hotel and all of the visitors for Oceanside. The proposed restaurant is consistent with visitor-serving uses within the area and will not negatively impact the surrounding area. The project is also consistent with the Downtown Zoning Ordinance, complies with all the development regulations in terms of bulk-scale height. They will provide all the climate action requirements. They're providing an EV parking stall, solar-ready roof, and they also have renewable resources within the building. And since this project is within the coastal zone, non-appellable district, there's no adverse impacts to public adverse impacts to public coastal access, nor will there be obstructions of public coastal views or public coastal parking. So, with that, staff recommends that the Community Development Commission adopt the resolution approving this development plan, use permit, and regular coastal permit. This concludes my presentation. If I have any questions, the applicant is here and will make themselves known.
Did you say that the seating is only outdoors? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Outdoors only.
And by the way, the ordinance that you mentioned that was introduced -- it was introduced on the 15th. It hasn't been adopted. We're doing that tonight, and then it'll be effective in 30 days from today.
That's correct. We have -- we are in the process of sending that once you guys approve the ordinance. But final -- I believe final occupancy can't be signed off until that's approved.
Okay, got it. Is the -- so, the applicant -- does the applicant wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Is it 20 minutes? Yeah. Well, you've got 20 minutes, but you can reserve, you know.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the councilmembers. My name is Hannibal Petrosi. I'm a project architect. I couldn't present the project better than what Scott did, and my hat's off for him on him that since we started working with the planning department, he's been very helpful with his guidance. You know, we could develop the design that would fit that area over there, and also many of the requirements that city planning had. So, said that, you know, I'm -- really, everything what he said is there, and I'm here to answer any question. Also, in our team, we have the developer, who's the traffic engineer of the record for the project, and from Starbucks management, they're here also to answer any question in regards to operation.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. This is the time for public to address this specific issue. Do we have any advanced requests or requests to speak?
We do not have any registered requests to speak on this item.
Okay. So, if you have a wish to address this issue, please approach the podium, identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you.
I see no one rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close. Okay.
I was thinking it was on the next --
Your name?
Oh, Patty Gertrum. Clarification, I guess. I didn't know it was on that vacant lot on the west side of Coast Highway, right? Is that what -- that's what you're saying, on Neptune and Coast Highway, correct?
Yes.
Therefore, but I remember, because I live off Neptune, and it's going to be so impacted, crazy, and the traffic, honestly, I know this is, you know, the traffic coming off 76 onto Coast Highway is bad enough, and probably last year when you approved the roundabouts or a few years -- there's a roundabout right in that area, I believe, scheduled. So, I don't know, you know, what that's going to do to the traffic on the corner of Neptune and Coast Highway. I mean, I believe in development, but please take that into consideration, and if you could go back and look at your plans for those roundabouts, I don't know how that's going to work, right?
Okay.
And the traffic's going to be backed up on the 5 anyway, coming off onto 76 and going with the roundabouts, if you're going to narrow Coast Highway down, which was approved a while ago. So, you're going to back the backup traffic coming off 5 South to 76 onto Coast Highway when you put reduce four lanes to two lanes, when you put in the roundabout, and then if you're having a drive-through Starbucks right on that intersection.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Yes, please approach the podium, identify yourself, and you can speak up to three minutes.
My name is John Bodorf with CleanEarthForKids.org. I'm a resident, long-term resident of Oceanside. My comment would be about the vehicle idling. It is a drive-through, so you're going to have vehicles sitting there for extended periods of time. Vehicle idling means car -- a lot of car exhaust. There's a lot of toxic pollution in car exhaust, carbon dioxide, benzene, carbon dioxide, a lot of very toxic things. One minute of vehicle idling is the same amount of carbon monoxide as three packs of cigarettes. So, my comment would be Starbucks is fine, but no drive-through. Do not do anything to encourage people idling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Rita Loria, resident of Oceanside. I would agree with these two speakers that just came up regarding the drive-through congestion used by In-N-Out Burger on the Hacienda Street. It's horrible. You can't even get into the parking lot. That should be considered if indeed the traffic circle is going to merge the traffic and the drive-through impact that whole area. Please definitely consider that.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? I see no one else rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and ask staff to address the issues that were raised, having to do with cars stacking, I guess, into the -- into traffic, and also what will happen if there is a traffic circle there. Will, for example, there be some space left on the road to accommodate some of the cars in addition to the person that will be out there?
Sure. Mayor Sanchez, we're going to have to see if our city traffic engineer wants to take a stab at this before I respond to this. He may have a little bit more knowledge on this one.
The Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, Hameed Bahadur, is the traffic engineer. The questions that were raised in terms of what's happening at Neptune right now compared to what's happening when the Coast Corridor is constructed and roundabout, there are two different things. Under today's circumstances, Neptune Coast Highway intersection will safely accommodate the traffic that's coming out of that street after they are serviced by Starbucks. There will be gaps, because we have a signal at the intersection of 76 and Coast Highway, and there will be gaps for people to make a left turn out. We looked at the need for potentially restricted that left turn. It is not needed under existing conditions. And the queuing distance is also ample, is 15 cars, which the queuing analysis that the traffic consultant has done shows that that's adequate. In the future, when we decide to build the Coast Highway Corridor and the roundabout goes at the signal where it is now at the intersection of 76 and Coast Highway, the whole intersection of Neptune at that time, under a Coast Highway corridor, is shown as a protected pedestrian crossing with rapid flashing beacon. We will evaluate it at that time, even though it was once evaluated when the Coast Highway Corridor was repaired. At that time, if there is a need, we will reevaluate the access restrictions at the intersection of Neptune and Coast Highway. But that is a decision for when we actually get into the detailed design of the Coast Highway Corridor.
So, in the future, there could be potential for having a different access?
In the future, when the roundabout is designed, we will look at the patooning and the free flow, and if there are gaps in the patooning and the free flow of the traffic coming from the roundabout, we will still maintain the full access at this intersection. If the flow is continuous and we don't think -- and these are done through mathematical modeling and calculations, and if there is not sufficient gap or to allow a left turn out of Neptune, at that time, we will reevaluate a potential restriction. But that decision is way down the road when we actually want to build that roundabout.
So, the developer, the applicant is fully aware that there may be some --
Fully aware, and this is -- and again, I may remind you that there is a signal only down the street at Seagate. So, people who feel that they do not want to make a left out of Neptune, they can use the signalized intersection at Seagate. Even at that time, that the development of the Starbucks at that corner can be accommodated safe.
Thank you very much. And I forgot to ask the applicant, you did have time reserved for rebuttal if you wanted to respond to any of the questions that were brought up, or rely on what staff has gone ahead and explained. The public is -- a portion is done, sorry. It is completed. It's now closed. No. Sorry. So, no other comments by staff. Back to the council. Councilmember Weiss.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. So, you've got onsite parking for what looks to be the patrons, but where are the employees going to park?
Councilmember Weiss, so the required parking is five spaces for the patrons and just the entire business itself. They're providing eight stalls within the site. The applicant mentioned that they -- at any given time, they'll have anywhere from two to three employees onsite. At the peak-demand times, they may have three or four. They do provide incentives to employees who utilize rideshare, public transit, and either bike or walk to the site, so that's another option there. And then also, in addition, this site, it caters more to vehicles, so the parking will most likely be freed up for a drive-through -- I'm sorry, drive-through vehicles, and it also caters to pedestrians walking to the site, so we took that into account.
Thank you.
And, all right, so I have no other lights, but I want to make a comment here. I do hope that this becomes more walkable. I think that was kind of like the comments that were being made, is like, you know, this is traffic congestion. How can we reduce that? And one of the ways that staff is recommending is that there be a turnabout, and that way that staff -- that traffic will flow and not be stopped for any, you know, purpose. And also, if you have flow -- traffic flowing, that you don't have a lot of speeding that happens. So, Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I did want to say that I did get some emails about -- concerns about traffic, and I note that the staff report did have concerns about traffic as well. I'm going to go ahead and support this, and as staff has indicated, that when the time comes, that there is a different configuration for traffic flow, that at that time, there may be changes to access to the business, et cetera. And I'm understanding that the applicant fully understands this at this time. So, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. How many people do we have for items not on the agenda?
We have two that are registered, but two registered under General Councilmember Comments. I'm assuming those are off agenda items.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay. Our first public comment is from John Bodorf, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Good evening. My name is John Bodorf with CleanEarthForKids.org. First, I just want to say, please bring back public comments over Zoom at City Council meetings to ensure that all persons, including people with disabilities and sensitive health, have equal access to participate. I attend virtual council meetings and make comments all the time, in Sanitas, Carlsbad, Solana Beach, Del Mar, and San Diego, to name just a few. All voices need to be heard. Next, I want to say thank you for passing the IPM in 2020 and protecting our parks from toxic pesticides. If toxic pesticides are not used by the city, the risk of damages and miscommunication are minimized, and incidents that led to the California Water Board violation will never happen again. We have seven suggestions for the IPM. One, stop the use of synthetic pesticides in all city areas. Synthetic pesticides are linked to a lot of health problems. There are natural alternatives, as shown in the IPM. Two, require written approval by Tier 2 Maintenance Supervisor and Director for any use of synthetic pesticides. Three, improve the staff training on alternatives to pesticides. Four, staff training on health effects and risks of pesticides, pesticide drift, et cetera. And please offer public workshops quarterly or at least annually to demonstrate integrated pest management techniques to help eliminate pesticides in residential landscaping. Five, establish buffer zones for leased agriculture use and stop leasing to West Coast tomato growers because they are using toxic pesticides that harm public health, our water, land, and air. We have data and spreadsheets to share, or require them to be certified organic to lease city land. And six, improve IPM notification and information on the city website. And lastly, seven, only allow EPA Category 4-level pesticides in the IPM. The EPA has four categories of toxicity for pesticides and chemicals. Category 1 to 3 are toxic. Category 1 is highly toxic. An example is paraquat, which is banned in 48 countries, but still allowed in the U.S., including California. One SIP is lethal. Pesticides in Category 3 are toxic as well. For example, glyphosate is listed under Prop 65 for cancer, and atrazine is listed as a reproductive toxicant under Prop 65. People are familiar with atrazine and paraquat, so they are used as examples here, but are not used by the City of Oceanside. Glyphosate is still used by the city, just not in the parks. Our ask is no EPA Category 1, 2, or 3-level pesticides used by the city. Please remember, legal does not mean safe. Did you know the U.S. bans only 15 pesticides? China bans 51. The U.S. is very far behind the rest of the world in pesticide safety. Let's work together to stop all pesticide use in Oceanside. Thank you from CleanEarthForKids.org.
Thank you.
Arlene Hammerschmidt, to be followed by Moss Rosen.
Good evening, council and honorable mayor. I would like to urge this council to revisit and change the ordinance to allow public to comment via Zoom in council meetings. And I -- it's just, you know, many members of public have very big health concerns. They don't want to be in a group of people at all, and we're not hearing those voices. Those are very learned and experienced voices that we have cut off, that this group, this body, has cut off from being heard, and really, it looks bad. And hostility to public participation is what it's starting to look like. It's an awful look for an elected official, whether his or her first or last term of office. And really, many of us in the community feel that you just don't want to hear our voices. So, please, please revisit this ordinance and your vote, and I hope you will -- someone here will take that up, get another person -- another council member to co-sign on that, and bring it to council for reconsideration. Please. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Joanne Fuchs. Moss? That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Item number 29 is adoption of an ordinance to amend Articles 4A and 12 of the Downtown Zoning Ordinance to provide for additional commercial uses within the downtown use matrix while streamlining the review of such uses as modified by the California Coastal Commission as part of the implementation plan of the local coastal program.
Move adoption.
Title?
This is the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Article 4A and 12 of the Downtown Zoning Ordinance to provide for additional commercial uses while streamlining --
commercial uses while streamlining the review of such uses with modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission, RZA 190001.
Let's vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Any general council member comments? Seeing none, going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the Mayor Council Workshop on January 19, 2022, 2:00, to discuss solid waste recycling, organics collection, and processing franchise agreement. Thank you.